Well, good evening. We're here tonight, consistent with Act 133, to have a public hearing regarding the potential closure of SCI Retreat. We're going to begin with Chief Counsel Tim Holmes to go over what the law specifically says, so everybody's on the same page. From there, Amy Schwank will talk about the steps the department's taken. We have local officials. I want to acknowledge Senator Udichak, as well as Senator Baker, Representative Pajinski. I also want to note that Representative Mullery was going to attend. He is sick, but he did submit to us a list to be forwarded to the Governor of questions and concerns he has, which will become part of the report. So I told him on his behalf, we'd let him know that he was under the weather. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tim Holmes.
My name is Tim Holmes. I'm the Chief Counsel for the Office of Chief Counsel for the Department of Corrections. We are here tonight in part because of the requirements of the Public Safety Facilities Act. Thirty-five Pennsylvania Statute, Section 10273, Paragraph B2, provides that a public entity must hold at least one public hearing in the county where the public safety facility is located prior to a final decision of a closure. For the purposes of this act, the Department of Corrections is a public entity, and the state correctional institution at Retreat is a public safety facility. Therefore, we are holding the public hearing here at the Nanticoke Area Public High School.
Amy?
Good evening. My name's Amy Schwank. I'm the Chief of Staff for the Department of Corrections, and I'm currently overseeing the proposed closure process. The Department of Corrections is bound by Act 133, which outlines the requirements we must follow during this process. The Department utilized the Act to formulate the facility closure guidelines, which operationalizes the laws that bind us, as well as the procedures that guide us throughout each step. The Department is currently reviewing costs, operational variables, financial considerations, impact on inmates, security, and most importantly, staff. In addition to these variables, we are working with the Departments of Community and Economic Development, Labor and Industry, Human Services, and Administration to determine the impacts to areas outside of our direct purview. The Department will also review and consider all statements and comments made at this hearing tonight, as well as those submitted to our email resource account. Regardless of the final decision, a report will be submitted, which will include all factors and public comment addressed here tonight.
Thank you. So that's the kind of formality part. Next, we're going to go to a statement from the Governor, followed by testimony from DCED. Then we're going to go to our local elected officials, then the unions, starting with PSCOA. After the union speak, the superintendent of SCI Retreat will speak on behalf of the facility. Then our local elected officials will have an opportunity to speak, and then we're going to open it up to public comment. So there'll be two lines for the public comment. They'll take your name. You'll come up. You'll have two to three minutes to give your comment. We're prepared to make sure we hear from everyone who wants to be heard. Just be aware that this is both being recorded by CMS, the Commonwealth Media Service, and there'll be a link to this on the website. And it's also, there'll also be a transcript available that I also anticipate we will link to the website. So just be aware of that when you speak. When you do speak, if you come up and just say your name clearly, so that our transcriptionist can get it, we'd appreciate it. So with that, Thomas Caffrey, from the Governor's Northeast Office, with a statement from the Governor.
The following is a statement from Governor Tom Wolf. I do not take the decision to close a prison lightly. My administration is committed to criminal justice reform, and that means creating an emboldened and more just system. I am striving to implement a system that is fair and relies less on incarceration and more on proactively providing education, jobs, and economic opportunity for all Pennsylvanians. Closing this prison, though difficult, would allow us to have additional capital to fund school districts and higher education, and to provide for more expansive economic development. A priority in this decision is ensuring Retreat's employees, who serve a critical role in the corrections community and in maintaining public safety for the citizens of Pennsylvania, have continued employment within the Commonwealth. My administration is committed to state employees and the unions that represent them. We would work with your representatives and you individually to make a potentially difficult transition as smooth as possible. Each Retreat employee would be offered a job at another northeastern facility within 65 miles of Retreat. I am working with Senator Udichak and the Department of Community and Economic Development, who you will hear from shortly, to determine state resources and private sector incentives toward economic redevelopment of this area, because no community should rely solely on a prison for its economic viability. I am grateful to Secretary Wetzel and his leadership team for holding this hearing and for listening in person on my behalf to your concerns. We will be generating a response to every question and an overall report when a final decision is made. Thank you for taking your time to come here tonight and for being respectful participants in this hearing. I appreciate your presence and points of view, which will help me make, as I make this difficult decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul McInowski, from Department of Community and Economic Development.
Thank you, Secretary Wetzel. Decisions such as these are difficult, and they require significant discussion and study regarding the impact they have on our communities. With that in mind, I'd like to share some of the results of our internal analysis of the local economic effects of closing SCI Retreat. There are currently 409 employees at SCI Retreat, and the facility reported annual spending of $68.68 million. Of this, 83% is expenses, is personal expenses, and 17% operational expenses. Forty-three million of annual spending is estimated to stay in the local economy. There are 349 ripple effects jobs that are created or supported as a result of Retreat's operational spending and the household spending by the facility's 409 employees. The loss to the local economy related to SCI Retreat's payments to the local vendors is estimated to be as much as $6.6 million. This would mean an estimated annual loss of $33,700 in local earned income taxes. The loss to the local economy related to SCI Retreat employees is estimated to be as much as $150,000 a year for each and every employee, but only if the employee moves away from the area to take another job. This would mean an annual loss of $1,300 in local earned income taxes for every employee that moves away. An in-plan analysis indicated that the total impact of SCI Retreat's operations in Luzerne County is approximately $104.5 million. More specifically, the direct effect of lost wages and local purchasing is estimated at $60.7 million. The indirect effect of lost vendor spending on wages and goods is approximately $11.8 million, and the induced effect of employee household spending is approximately $32 million. It's important to note that this impact scenario represents the total impact of SCI Retreat's operations in Luzerne County. The actual impact, economic impact of the facility closure would occur in proportion to the value of lost income for local vendors and the number of employees and their households who would move away from the area to take another job. These figures, as I mentioned, represent the impact of the loss of all 409 SCI Retreat jobs at SCI Retreat, essentially the worst-case scenario. However, if this facility is closed, the employees are expected to have the option to transfer to a nearby facility. While that would be difficult to assume the number of employees who had transferred to another facility and still live in Luzerne County, we compiled current commuting data to provide some insights. The average current drive time for SCI staff is currently 28 minutes, with a minimum of 12 minutes and a maximum of 105 minutes. SCI Dallas would be the closest facility for 84% of the current staff. 52% of the current staff would be closer to work, and the average drive time for all employees would be reduced to 27 minutes in the event of the closure of SCI. Regardless of the final decision on the status of SCI Retreat, the Commonwealth is committed, and DCED is committed, to continue our support of economic and community development in Luzerne County. Sustained investment by the Commonwealth in the expansion of public-private partnerships are producing significant results. More specifically, the state's funding of the $90 million South Valley Parkway opened up 7,000 acres for residential and commercial development. This Commonwealth investment was a key reason that North Point Development recently invested $209.4 million to develop the track noted as the North Point Nine. Three buildings at the 342-acre park are expected to, are projected to create 1,548 new jobs, with an average salary of $41,000 and annual payroll of $63.4 million. Secretary Davin, the Governor's Action Team, and DCED are committed to continuing our work with the local legislators and economic development partners and other state and local officials to make strategic investments in the region in an effort to create a more diverse and robust economy. There's no doubt that the closure of SCI Retreat is a challenging decision, and as with the closure of any employer of this size, it will come with immediate impacts to the local economy. However, through the combination of relocation of employees, worker training efforts to improve and broaden their skills, and continued investments from the state and the local economy and communities, I'm confident this region will continue to grow and thrive in the years ahead. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I would also note that the full DCED impact report will be part of the final report. From here, we're going to hear from Deputy Chris Ottman to talk about the financials, and then hear from Regional Deputy Wingart and Wenerowitz directly after Deputy Ottman.
Good evening, Mr. Secretary, and members of the congregation. On August 29th of this year, Secretary John Wetzel announced the Department of Corrections has proposed the closing of SCI Retreat. This is a difficult decision for the administration, as we know how this affects our staff, but with an estimated $140 million deficit and a declining inmate population, it is hard to justify maintaining excess capacity with our facility footprint. This financial deficit was a result of several significant events in fiscal year 1718 and 1819. The Department did not receive funding in 1718 to cover staff raises, as agreed by the collective bargaining agreements. This amounted to over $32 million, which the Department had to carry over to the next fiscal year. Fiscal year 1819 presented many challenges, as we closed SCI Greaterford and opened SCI Phoenix. The move and the installation of all equipment and supplies was an enormous task for our staff. Additional staff were required in order to ensure public safety and proper operating procedures were put into place. This move cost the Department over $10 million in overtime, but the security and operational goals were met. The Department also experienced serious threats to our staff and inmates when a spike in illicit drugs began coming into our institutions, causing several drug exposures that required our staff to seek emergency medical attention. The Department responded with a statewide lockdown and a reevaluation of our security procedures. Additional personal protective equipment was acquired, and training was provided to all staff. Additional equipment, including ion scanners, body scanners, and drone detection, was acquired. The Department contracted out the processing of all mail in order for, to be received at an off-site location and digitized, so that no physical mail would be delivered with illicit drugs hidden within. The Department also created a security processing center in order to thoroughly inspect all publications and packages to ensure the chance of drugs could not be introduced by this method as well. Additional correction officers were added to the inmate visitor rooms to combat the daily attempts to introduce drugs from inmate visitors. All these initiatives helped drastically to limit the amount of drugs coming into our institutions, but they also came at a cost of approximately $10 million. These funds were not in our original budget, as this was unforeseen, but the safety of our staff and inmates was greatly improved. The Department did not include a closure in our fiscal year 1920 budget. Our budget process begins with us doing a flat projection, given current-year expenditures. This led us to submitting our request for an increase with all personnel and salary increases of $248 million, in addition to the increased drug interdiction efforts. From there, the Governor's Budget Office makes modifications, which led to us testifying assumed increase of our allocation of $126 million with a $50 million supplemental to cover past deficit. But in fact, we received a $108 million increase and only a $10 million supplemental. This $140 million cut from our original request put the Department in a difficult place. As stewards of taxpayer money, we are only authorized to expend appropriated funds. Therefore, responsible cuts must be made. Once the Department received its final appropriation for fiscal year 1920, it was apparent that several measures needed to be taken in order to address the budget deficit of $140 million. The administration reviewed all expenses and all programs in order to make decisions on how best to maintain proper operations without sacrificing security and long-term goals. Several cuts were made, including decreasing administrative positions at central office by 10%, closing the outside housing units at Greaterford and Huntington, closing the Community Correction Center at Sharon, reducing the use of community contracts for parolee services, and repurposing Progress Community Correction Center in order to keep parole violators in-house and avoid county contracts on which the Department was spending in excess of $10 million. We are also installing more energy-efficient power plants at SCI Frackville and SCI Huntington, and combining specialized housing units where possible. All of this aforementioned measures will save the Department millions of dollars, but will not address enough of the projected deficit without also having to take a look at our institutional footprint. The closing of a prison is something that the Department of Corrections does not take lightly. We understand how this can affect staff and their families, as I have personally experienced this with the closing of SCI Pittsburgh, where families and friends of mine worked. Some of our institutions have been operating for decades, and any one of them costs at least $50 million or more to operate, and some operate more efficiently than others due to the physical condition and the design of the facility. The Department has experienced a decrease in inmate population by 1,534 inmates in fiscal year 1819. There were 46,482 inmates housed in the Department's custody at the end of June 2019, and the operational bed capacity at that point was 47,835. The Department is thus operating at 97.2% of operational bed capacity. The goal of the Department is to operate the Pennsylvania correction system at our operational bed capacity, which represents the optimal number of inmates that each facility can house based on housing, availability of inmate employment, and programming, support, and facility infrastructure. The Department has continued to operate under 100% operational capacity for almost the entirety of fiscal year 1819. In fact, should SCI Retreat close and the population remains the same as it was in June of 2019, the operational capacity will still be lower than 100% at 98.6%. Several measures have been taken in order to address the potential effects of closing SCI Retreat. In order to address the needs of our current staff, a hiring freeze has been instituted in effect in the northeast, as the Department is committed to making a job offer to all staff within 65 miles of Retreat. This freeze will allow the opportunity for staff to respond to surveys on the preference of which institution they would want to transfer, with seniority and availability of open positions being considered. Secondary recall we used after the selection process for those who might not get their first selection. In regard to the Township Sewer Authority, the Department is contractually obligated to pay the remainder on capital upgrades to the system, which is approximately $37,000 per month, totaling over $500,000 for the next 15 months. The Department also has agreed to continue to make quarterly sewage usage payments for the next five years, which is estimated to cost $128,000 per year. The Department has completed a variety of cost-saving measures that have saved millions for the Commonwealth. Overtime expenses were decreased by 400,000 hours over a four-year period. Last year, the opening of Phoenix and the drug interdiction efforts increased our overtime expense for that year by $15 million. These measures were the best possible option in order to maintain the safety of our staff and the general public. Our vacancy rate for correctional officers has reached less than 1%, and we are seeing that overtime is projected to be significantly lower than it was last fiscal year. Unfortunately, the appropriations provided to the Department based on decreasing population of inmates does not provide the sustainability of our current amount of institutions without jeopardizing our mission to maintain the safety of our staff, inmates, and the general public. We will continue to create efficiencies and operate in a fiscally responsible manner for the taxpayers of Pennsylvania and the Commonwealth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Trevor?
Good evening. My name is Trevor Winger, and I'm a Deputy Secretary for the Western Region. A few words. Deputy, the Department of Corrections remains committed to staff safety and staff wellness. We have expanded and enhanced staff training over the past several years with the addition of AMAC, which also is Assault Management Applications and Corrections, mental health first aid, weapons training, and we are getting ready to roll out enhanced communication skills training for frontline staff referred to as the Yield Theory Program. As Deputy Ottman mentioned, we continue to take the introduction of contraband extremely serious. Also, we continue to make staff safety a priority, and soon, all staff will be offered the option to wear puncture-resistant vests. Moreover, over the past several years, the facilities have focused locally on staff wellness through the establishment of groups such as Corrections Outreach for Veterans and Employee Restoration, also known as COVER. As of today, most, if not all, facilities have a COVER group at their local facility. This allows their staff to communicate with each other about their issues and provide support to one another. In addition, our facilities also remain committed to staff well-being with programs such as staff mentoring and employee empowerment. Thank you.
I'm Mike Wenerowitz, Deputy Secretary for the Eastern Region. Some background information on SCI Retreat. Retreat was built in 1938. Retreat was operated as a state mental hospital from 1943 until 1981, when it was formally closed. Then on January 6th, 1988, the state correctional institution at Retreat was formally opened and dedicated by Commissioner David S. Owens, Jr. The institution currently houses 1,022 inmates and has a current staff and complement of 415 staff. As mentioned by Deputy Secretary Ottman, there is enough bed capacity in the DOC to accommodate the move of 1,000 inmates from SCI Retreat. There's also enough specialized programming to accommodate inmates that are currently in specialized program, and there's also enough mental health beds available if needed. DOC staffing levels are at an all-time high, and our correctional officer vacancy rate is at an all-time low. To the 400-plus staff at Retreat, you will be guaranteed employment within 65 miles of Retreat. This encompasses six state correctional facilities: SCI Cold Township, SCI Dallas, which is in Luzerne County, SCI Frackville, SCI Mahanoi, SCI Muncie, and SCI Waymart. The staff at these facilities understand what you're going through, as Frackville and Waymart staff were part of the last hearings on the Pittsburgh closure. I admire the work that all the staff at Retreat do, as pending closure seems to be a cloud over their facility for the last 10 years, yet the staff there continue to perform at a high level to protect and serve the public while providing specialized care to inmates. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to hear from our senators. Care about order? Senator Udichak?
Good evening, Secretary Wetzel. Welcome to the Greater Nanticoke Area School District, my alma mater. I'm very proud of my school, very proud of the men and women behind me. More than 80% of the over 400 employees at SCI Retreat live in Luzerne County, and the vast majority of them and their families go to this school district. I take the seriousness of those jobs and the responsibility of fighting for them with the utmost seriousness, and I hope the Department, under Act 133, takes their job of evaluating this decision with the same level of seriousness. In January of 2017, Luzerne County got the news that SCI Retreat was on the list of five state prisons for possible closure. The Department of Corrections gave the employees of those facilities and the communities that support their operations just 20 days, 20 days to make their case through the local media outlets to save their prisons and save their jobs. No public meeting was required, no analysis of the impact on public safety was required, and no study of the economic impact of a prison closure on the local economy was required. The important and life-and-death decision to close a public safety facility under past practices was made outside the transparency of the state budget process and was done unilaterally, without any legislative or public input. I have always been proud to call Luzerne County home, but I was especially proud of Luzerne County in those 20 days in January of 2017. Elected leaders from all levels of government, business owners from every corner of Luzerne County, school officials and the families, most importantly, the families of SCI Retreat, all banded together with one common goal: Save SCI Retreat. It was their voices. It was their voices that the Department of Corrections heard loud and clear. It was their voices that saved SCI Retreat from closure in that fight nearly three years ago. It was also their voices that demanded a change to the process, a change to how the Commonwealth makes decisions on how they close public safety facilities. It is because of those voices from Luzerne County that Act 133 of 2018 became law in Pennsylvania, and it is the reason, it is a reason that the Department of Corrections is here tonight in Nanticoke to once again listen to the voices of Luzerne County. And I hope the Department of Corrections takes very seriously the requirements of Act 133. The people of Luzerne County deserve to see an extensive written analysis of how the closing of SCI Retreat will impact public safety, the local economy, the loss of local tax revenue, and the feasibility of repurposing the facility. If the Department of Corrections proceeds in haste with the closure of SCI Retreat based on ideological grounds, rather than the criteria enumerated in Act 133, then I submit that the Department of Corrections will seriously breach the public's trust and erode legislative confidence in the administration of our prison system in Pennsylvania. Since the announcement on August 28th, the voices of Luzerne County have grown louder and stronger. I have listened to very personal stories of all of these families, so have Senator Baker, Senator Gorder, and the entire Luzerne County Legislative Delegation. We have heard from the unions that represent the 414 employees, including the Pennsylvania State Corrections Officers Association, ASKME, and SEIU, who have grave, grave concerns that closing yet another prison in Pennsylvania could lead to overcrowding at the other state correctional facilities and put public employees in danger. Let's forever remember the name of Sergeant Mark Basserman, a corrections officer who was murdered by an inmate at SCI Somerset in 2018 when we are considering the closure of a state prison. The tragic death of Sergeant Basserman reminds us that state prisons are a life-and-death business, and the decision, the decision to close a state prison should be treated as a life-and-death decision. We have heard about the strain on the employees, the drop in morale as families now contemplate having to transfer to another facility that may be as much as 65 miles away, facing not only a longer commute- facing not only a longer commute, but a complete disruption of their family life and their investment in their community, and worst of all, it may force them from their Luzerne County homes. We have heard from our local leaders that a closure would be catastrophic to their school district and to the township of Newport, and of course, to our local economy. Coupled with the closure of Whitehaven Center, a closure of SCI Retreat would result in the loss of eight hundred jobs and a direct annual economic loss of over a hundred and five million dollars to the regional economy of Luzerne County. Specific to SCI Retreat, Newport Township would have a direct economic loss of over fifty-seven million dollars annually, and the Nanticoke Area School District will lose more than two million dollars in tax revenue. We have also heard from local small business owners, places like Morris's Restaurant and Stuckey's Barbecue over in Plymouth Township. Their bottom lines will be impacted by the closure of SCI Retreat. In the twenty years that I have served in the Pennsylvania General Assembly, I have seen Luzerne County rise from the decline of anthracite to a place where national companies are investing billions of dollars in our economy and creating thousands of new jobs. It is an amazing economic revitalization success story and one that has been fully supported by the Wolf Administration. So after decades of digging out of that mine hole, why at this time, why at this time would state government and the Department of Corrections kick Luzerne County back down the mineshaft? By stripping away over eight hundred jobs, thousands more in indirect losses in the job market by closing SCI Retreat and Whitehaven Center? Even with the positive economic development occurring throughout Luzerne County, the county's unemployment rate is still the highest of any metropolitan region in Pennsylvania. The combined closure of SCI Retreat and Whitehaven State Center is more than cruel and unusual punishment. It is the potential death penalty to seeing Luzerne County shake its status as the metropolitan area with the highest unemployment rate in Pennsylvania. Tonight, I implore you to listen to the voices of Luzerne County, let their voices resonate with you, and inform your decision. If nothing else, please listen to a voice that I respect when it comes to corrections. Listen to the voice of Secretary Wetzel from back in February of this year before the Senate Appropriations Committee. Secretary Wetzel said that the Department of Corrections Budget Submission did not assume a prison closure, and that while inmate population numbers were going down, the system needed stability, and that there were no big moves like a prison closure on the horizon. Closing SCI Retreat will not add to the stability of the state prison system. Over four hundred employees and over a thousand inmates will immediately be destabilized, and the community of Newport Township will be destabilized for decades to come. As Act One Thirty-Three of twenty eighteen requires you to do, pause and fully evaluate the impact of this decision to close SCI Retreat. The decision should not, should not be driven by partisan ideology. It should be driven by budget and economic data. And these are the objective facts, as I see them. The world is a dangerous place that requires soldiers in the battlefield, cops in the streets, and corrections officers on the toughest blocks in our state prisons. Communities across the state, including Newport Township, have willingly and effectively housed these prison facilities without incident or impact on public safety. Closing another prison without meeting the full requirements of Act One Thirty-Three could have dramatic and lasting consequences to the families of Luzerne County, to the communities of Luzerne County, and most certainly, to the economy of Luzerne County. But most importantly, they could have dire consequences for the public safety of our state employees and to the communities all across Pennsylvania. I respectfully encourage you to avoid the serious and substantial consequences of the department's decision to close SCI Retreat. Live up to the spirit of Act One Thirty-Three and keep SCI Retreat open.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Baker?
Thank you, Secretary Wetzel. Good evening, and thank you all for being here. To my colleague Senator Udichak, you certainly get a warm welcome at your alma mater. And, and thank you for the opportunity to work together with both Senators Gordoner, Argul, Brooks, and Fontana as we enacted Act One Thirty-Three to ensure, to ensure that the voices of the community, the voices of those impacted, would be heard. I want to thank the secretary and the entire department for being here, along with all of the officers, the families, the families of inmates, those who are gathered here today. The announcement of the potential closure of SCI Retreat did set off alarms across our region and motivated a wide range of people to register their opposition, many of them you will hear from later this evening. We all realize that the population of the incarcerated population in Pennsylvania is steadily declining, and laws are being passed and policies adopted to help continue that trend. We also know, we also know that there are many correctional institutions across this state. So there is great, great disappointment that ours has been selected, particularly as the announcement came in conjunction, as Senator Udichak said, with the intention to close Whitehaven Center. That compounds the community and economic disruptions. And while we have strenuously voiced objections to this plan in various forums, there remain many pivotal questions for which committed responses are required, and I appreciate your commitment and the commitment of the governor to respond to those specific questions. There are naturally concerns related to community and public safety and the economic implications. You will hear much about that. If this decision is truly irreversible, as the state seems to be signaling, what does state government in turn offer in the way of guarantees, guarantees to lessen the impact on those directly affected? What is the disposition of the special care prisoners at the facility? We have always been told, and you have always highlighted, the unique services that are provided at Retreat. So where will the new placements be? How much cost will be incurred in augmenting and upgrading whatever currently exists in those new locations? How realistic or disruptive are the reassignment options for all of the employees? Do they have any negotiating room? Or are they given a take-it-or-leave-it proposition? One chance and done? What is the ripple effect across local law enforcement and emergency response, which are structured and funded in part to reflect what is needed in the neighborhood of a state correctional institution? Based on the reasons the department has offered to explain closure, it appears this is not a facility that will be easily or cheaply repurposed. That is a significant impact for the local economy. We've already heard that the jobs removed from the area are the most visible loss, but there is also the effect on the businesses that will have to replace the contracts for goods and services provided to the institution and for all of those businesses who serve your staff and rely in turn on their purchases. Are there preliminary or promising discussions about reuse of this property, either as another state government operation or as a private acquisition? Could this site in fact serve vulnerable populations that are hard to place by the department? We've had many, many conversations about the need for us to look at medical parole. Is this the exact site location that possibly could serve in that capacity for the future? But there are several other key pieces of infrastructure for which the community has incurred cost and took on debt to help out the Commonwealth and our needs. The first is the sewer system. The second is the natural gas connection recently installed at a cost of more than one million dollars to the state. Is there an existing annual contract for that? These are long-term arrangements entered into in good faith by those who serve the institution. It would be, in my judgment, irresponsible and unacceptable for the Commonwealth to short its obligations. We want to see local jurisdictions made whole so that higher taxes or fees are not the price for abandonment of Retreat. Those accustomed to dealing with big numbers in the state budget, as we hear billions and billions, can overlook the havoc that can be wreaked on a municipality and authority, their budget, by this major dislocation. At current rates, at the current rates, the Shikshini Sewer Authority struggles with a thirty percent delinquency rate. This is a region that has been ravaged by flooding, both Shikshini, Cunningham Township, Maconacqua, and Salem Township. So to pile on a big rate increase on what exists, the delinquencies will rise and soar. That will imperil operations and make paying off the existing one-point-one-million-dollar loan even more difficult. I've heard members of your staff speak about a contract over a five-year period. The existing loan payoff isn't over until twenty thirty-six. And as I understand it, without the prison, the authority is left with an inflow of just two hundred thousand gallons a day, down from a count of four hundred and fifty thousand. The engineers and the operators fear major issues in trying to make this plant remain operational if you leave. In fact, they're not even sure that that can be accomplished. What will be done for the community if that facility cannot operate? Will Pennsylvania issue a grant for them to reconfigure the plant? Will Pennsylvania guarantee beyond that five-year contract to pay off the one-point-one-million-dollar loan so that ratepayers are not on the hook? The potential of an annual sewer bill going from sixty dollars a quarter to close to five hundred dollars a quarter in the neighborhood of two thousand dollars will provide a severe hardship on the families and businesses in Shikshini, Maconacqua, and Salem Township. These are very challenging questions that we need answers for. And for the residents of this area, for all of the corrections officers, there are, in my judgment, considerable downsides to this closure decision. We are still waiting for proof that this isn't a body blow to the health and safety of our community, and more important, not a foreclosure on our future. And so I will submit my records, my remarks for the record, along with a letter on behalf of Senator John Gordoner, who was unable to be here, who represents lower Luzerne County as well, spelling out some of the same concerns and raising the same questions. So with that, thank you, Mr. Secretary.
So next, we're going to be hearing from our four unions representing staff. First will be Larry Blackwell from PSCOA, followed by Kerry Gallagher from ASME, Carrie Andrews from CivIA, and finally, Leo Cassell from SEIU. So, Mr. Blackwell?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Larry Blackwell, and I'm the president of the Pennsylvania State Corrections Officers Association, representing approximately ten thousand members. As I come before you today, another community is in turmoil of a planned prison closure, and the lives of dedicated employees who staff SCI Retreat have been turned upside down. Just six years ago, the Corbett Administration closed SCI Crescent, SCI Greensburg. In two thousand seventeen, the Wolf Administration closed SCI Pittsburgh. Now in two thousand nineteen, SCI Retreat is on the chopping block, only months after the secretary told the state lawmakers that he didn't see any closings in the future because the department needed stability. Yet we've been told that this latest closure announcement is warranted because Pennsylvania inmate population is decreasing, and the closure will be a way for Pennsylvania to save money. And we understand this. Every administration and lawmaker in the House and in the Senate are looking for savings. But we caution against savings that will put public safety and our corrections officers in jeopardy. In two thousand seventeen, when the DOC announced the closure of SCI Pittsburgh, they claimed it was a desirable piece of property which could be sold and repurposed. In fact, we were told that the closing of the prison would save eighty-one million dollars in addition profits from the sale of the property. Two years later, we realized that neither one of these predictions came true. The property is still empty, and now the DOC is paying higher overtime costs to the corrections officers from SCI Mercer that are still working the hospital posts that remain in SCI Pittsburgh. The savings simply aren't there. The Wolf Administration and Legislature have made it a goal to reduce the inmates' population through Justice Reinvestment, and now through JRI, too. And this is a commendable goal. Every Pennsylvanian should want to make sure that the punishments for the offenders fit their crimes and that inmates are not incarcerated longer than they must be held. But what we have is a system that's releasing violent offenders into society. This summer, Pennsylvania parolees killed six people in two months, two of them being young children. Just last year, parolees were arrested for committing or attempting ninety-three murders and over four thousand violent crimes. And currently, as of today, there's one thousand seven hundred seventeen absconders in the parole system. That's six hundred more inmates on the run than fill SCI Retreat currently. And this is completely unacceptable. Not only do these statistics demand an independent review of the parole process, but they, it should be clear, a clear signal to the administration and legislature that prison closures should not be considered at this time with so many violent offenders and repeat offenders. The citizens of Pennsylvania deserve to have confidence that their government is not allowing violent inmates back out onto the street. From an officer's perspective, another danger that must be considered in the transfer of inmates into other prisons that are already at capacity, and most importantly, have no additional room for the restricted housing unit for the violent criminals. Where are we going to house the most violent inmates? Mark my words, these inmates will know that they can assault our staff and other inmates and remain in general population. We have an obligation to make sure that our officers and all employees that work in a safe environment. Statistics can be manipulated to fit any formula, but it's clear to us that Pennsylvania's SCIs have become more and more violent with intentional attacks on corrections officers and other staff. My members are regularly targeted by inmates because the inmates know that there will be no serious repercussions. We simply do not agree with the DOC's contention that things are going well inside the SCIs. Closing this facility will cause great stress on corrections officers who are already under a lot of pressure. Decisions will have to be made on relocating or commuting upwards of an hour home after working a full shift and many times a sixteen-hour shift. Members will struggle with moving their children to different school districts, as well as moving aging parents closer as well. Many house spouses will have to find new jobs. They also must consider if their current vehicle will be able to handle the new, longer drive, or if they will need to purchase a new car. These are all legitimate questions for hard-working men and women to answer under the very best of circumstances. Being forced to make these decisions while working dangerous jobs in a compressed timeframes make it even more difficult. For the last seven years, my members and their families have been constantly looking over their shoulders, wondering when their place of employment might be closed. This is a tough way to live. We are encouraging, the past spring during budget hearings, when Secretary Wetzel said that there was no plan- that there was no plans to close facilities and the Department of Corrections needed stability. Closing a prison is a very definition of instability. The PSCOA knows that there are cost savings that can be derived by the DOC budget, but we believe that any savings must come from a comprehensive look at the entire SCI system. We are on the ground, inside these SCI's every day. We want to work with the secretary and the administration to identify potential savings. We will welcome such opportunity. The answers cannot always be to close a prison. All of these issues, public safety, officer safety, employee safety, family trauma, must be taken into consideration. These concerns, as well as those being discussed by others here tonight, make it clear that SCI Retreat should remain open for the good of countless Pennsylvanians. I would like to thank Don Williams from the Voices of Joe and the men and women from Corrections that came out to support this public hearing tonight, and thank you for
Good evening, members of the committee. My name is Carrie Gallagher, and I am the Director of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, District Council 87. We represent over 5,000 workers in northeastern Pennsylvania, including employees at SCI Retreat. I'm here to voice AFSMI's opposition to the closing of SCI Retreat. This will cause extreme upheaval for the nearly 400 dedicated employees at the facility and adversely affect the local economy, and most importantly, pose public safety concerns and safety issues for the women and men who work in Pennsylvania's state correctional institutions. The Department of Corrections' proposal to transfer employees to other facilities within a 65-mile radius is easy to put on paper, but it's widely unreasonable to ask of the employees. The AFSMI-represented employees live in the local area, and to force them to drive an hour or more to get to and from work is just wrong. The decision to close SCI Retreat came on the heels of the announcement of plans to close the White Haven Center in Luzerne County. Much like the closure of the White Haven Center proposal, there was no consultation with employees before the decision was made. Now Luzerne County is seeing the loss of even more good union jobs that help sustain families and stimulate the local economy. How much more can we take? I ask the members of the committee to do everything in their power to reverse this decision, and please consider the difficult situations you would put hundreds of hard-working people in. Please consider the local economy that would suffer due to the loss of these jobs, and again, the safety of the public and the folks that work in the facilities.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Andrews. I work at SCI Retreat as a teacher in the Education Department. I'm speaking on behalf of my coworkers and members of SEIA, which is Correctional Institute Vocational Education Association Branch of PSEA. I have worked in corrections for 17 years, 15 of those years at SCI Retreat. I have grown to love my job. It is very rewarding to see my students work hard to succeed at a task. I have seen grown men break down in tears after finally earning a GED or a high school diploma, most considered an impossible task that they never thought they would have ever accomplished. Our Education Department is like your regular school. It is comprised of a principal, regular education teachers, special education teacher, an education counselor, automotive teacher, we have a barber school, and a full-running library with a certified librarian and librarian assistant. We offer many programs that benefit inmates and help to prepare them to re-enter society. Our annual graduation ceremony is taking place at the end of October. At this ceremony, inmates will be honored with the following. 19 have received their Commonwealth secondary diploma, which is the equivalent of the high school diploma earned in high schools. 13 will receive GEDs. 45 received the NCCER certificates, which is in the construction field basics. Six students successfully earned their barber licenses, which is a difficult exam to pass. Six automotive technician certificates. Four business and entrepreneurship certificates. 220 students earned their PA Department of Transportation flagger certificates, which prepare them to re-enter the workforce. We also have students who will be honored for having attended post-secondary education at various institutions. Currently, we have 475 students who attend school, which is almost half of the inmate population. In addition, we have a waitlist of 189 students waiting to get into various classes and programs. Our library is very popular. It had an average visit of 1,142 inmates over a three-month period of time. Lastly, we have our Activities Department, which offers many positive programs and activities to promote growth, responsibility, and overall physical wellness to our inmate population. We have an annual poetry contest, art contest, yoga, and various intramural sport leagues. In addition, they sponsor many outside organizations to engage the inmates, such as concerts, sports teams, and various speakers. The Activities Department also manages the inmate organization called the Community Development Organization. This organization just celebrated its 30th anniversary. Over this 30-year period of time, they have donated over $300,000 to various charities, both locally and around the country. This money is raised through various sales they sponsor throughout the year. In addition, they support the local economy by buying products from local vendors. On average, they spend around $75,000 a year. All of this money goes back into the community. It is the inmates' way of giving back. If Retreat closes, this support will end. In closing, I hope that the proposal to close SCI Retreat is reconsidered. We still have a lot of good work to do, and our time shouldn't be up.
Good evening, Secretary Wetzel. Good evening to everybody here. I'd like to thank all the veterans for the freedom and all the COs who make my job so much easier, and I feel no place safer than when I'm at SCI Retreat. I'm here as an elected Assistant Shopsteward for the Service Employees International Union Local 668. I'm a correction counselor too at SCI Retreat. I worked for the Commonwealth for over six years. Before that, I worked for the county. Before that, I worked in social services and mental health. I'm here to speak on behalf of us because closing one more prison is a short-term Band-Aid for the financial problems that we are having in the DOC. At what point can the simple idea of closing a prison be seen as not a real long-term solution to the complex financial problems we're having? It has not been working. If we look at the population right now, if everybody has their cellphone and they Google DLC, PLDLC, and you go right to the webpage, and thanks to the awesome transparency the DOC has, if you go right to the statistics, you go right there and you look at population for September 2019, you're going to see 11, I can't even count on two hands, 11 DLCs that are over 100% bed capacity. All the CCCs and CCFs are over 100% bed capacity. Having fewer prisons will have less specialized programs, less job-training programs, and less facilities to have a diverse, diversified group of programs with diverse populations. This inherently increases the possibility that when the reentrants come home, they're going to remember that they were treated by the DOC as a number. These citizens will become our neighbors again. Dealing with over 11 SCI's right now, as we speak, in September of 2019, that are over 100% bed capacity, this is not some logistical challenge, but it's an unsafe juggling act. It makes managing the population impossible. Security teams will have more difficulty. Reentrants will struggle to find their success that they need in our prison system while they're there. Aside from the safety issues, we got to talk about the ethical concern on how these reentrants are treated when they're crowded. Look at the statistics. Over 11 right now are over 100%. They're going to have fewer interactions with staff, and less of an opportunity to find success that goes against the grim odds they face when it comes to recidivism in our great Commonwealth. The average age of an inmate right now is 39 in the Commonwealth. They're getting older, and they keep coming back to prison. The price of housing an inmate is not going to go down. They're getting older. They need more things. To simple have the idea, just because our population is going down, our budget will go down, that is not realistic thinking. A first-year grad student could figure that out.[1301.58][1301.58][applause] Now, we have to remember, between 2005 and 2009, our population was growing so rapidly, it was estimated 26% that the state prison inmates had to be housed in county jails as well as other states. In 2010, our prison population was projected to be 60,000. But with the great people in the DOC, our administration, and the great people who represent our government, we passed the JRI in 2012. And with that, we have had that decline of 4,000 inmates in over six and a half years, and that is an accomplishment that we all should be proud of. But our population is down 26%, and our budget is only down 23%. Why is this so? Closing prisons do not save money. The prison population is going down, and it might continue to go down, but what happens if it doesn't? What happens if legislation changes? What happens if our governments change? Are we going to be putting prisoners in other states and other communities and paying them? Success is not linear. We know this. Statistics aren't linear. We know this. So as I was told by the DOC that a steering committee was formed to make the closure of the prison, I definitely wanted to get answers to this. So on August 29th, I asked, where did the steering committee come from? Where did it form? How, you know, the great work that our legislators did for Act 133 of 2018, it paints out everything, but it doesn't paint out what's going on prior to the steering committee. So I inquired about the steering committee, and this is the response I got, and I'm so thankful for the administration's transparency and their professionalism. I quote, "In regards to the steering committee question, it was formed on August 26, 2019. The formation of the steering committee and members associated with it are defined in the Department's statewide facility closure guidelines document, which is available on the department's website. Page 2 of that document outlines items the committee is required to review in order to make the recommendation. Once the committee reviews all pertinent information, they are required to send the required information to the secretary." It was formed on August 26th. That recommendation was forwarded Wednesday, August 27th. Now, if you look at that document, you can look at it in your phone right now, all the parties that had to come together, and there's a lot of them, and all the information that they had to review, it was a lot. It is quite the phenomenal feat that they got that done by the call of business. I asked my legislators, where did the steering committee come from? Who requested it to be formed? I asked for that transparency. Now, the great thing about the DOC and the great thing we have in our administrative team and our leaderships is they're great with statistics. I'm so proud of them, and I'm so proud to be a part of the team. But statistics, they're like a, they could be trimmed, they could be sliced down, you could pick certain years. They're malleable, they're manipulated. We see it all the time. Now, I don't have enough time to point out all the discrepancies, you know, and we are doing great things in the DOC, and I couldn't be more proud of everybody in this room. But in 2017 and 18, the year overtime was $93.8 million. In 2018, the 19 overtime is supposed to be over 108. That's $14 million. We're saving 20 by closing Retreat? Another point of concern is the parole violators, like the CO's union pointed out. Parole violators need to go somewhere. We need to help them and help their families. Those rates aren't going down. Those rates have been going up and down. There's no declining trend when it comes to parole violators. The only trend is that there is no trend. It's unpredictable. And like I said, we have 11 SCI's right now over 100% bed capacity. Now, with more crowded prisons, it's well-established you're going to have more violence. Every year, from 2008 to 2018, inmate assaults went up. And when comparing staff assaults to the year before, from 2018, 19, 2012, 14, and 15, staff assaults have gone up. It must be understood that just because the population might be declining doesn't mean it's becoming more easier to manage. It does not mean just because it's a smaller population that there is not more needs. These statistics are just small glimpses that can be catered to point an agenda. When it comes to our special needs of our inmates, our reentrants, and their family members, who are all our neighbors, we have to remember that 33% of our population is being treated for mental illness. Over 30% of our males, over 8% are considered severely mentally ill. We look at the female population, over 68% are receiving mental health services, and over 18% are severely mentally ill. How does closing down one facility that provides additional programs, yes, we all know other facilities will have these programs as well, but how does closing down a facility that does treat SMI, guilty by mental insanity, and have dual diagnosis programs for those with mental health conditions and drug and alcohol conditions, that we have a COTC and a co-occurring treatment, uh, community, and a co-occurring outpatient program? a co-occurring treatment, uh, community and a co-occurring outpatient program? How does getting rid of those programs help the community? How does that help the reentrant? How does that help the recidivism rate or the statistics? Remember, the days of cold storage are over. These reentrants are our family members, our friends, our neighbors, and will be back in the community. They are not faceless members. They are our neighbors. And we talk how we need to help our fellow man. The best time to help them is when they're available to be helped. They could receive the mental health treatment and the education in the SCI's. And by having less SCI's, you're going to have longer waiting lines for educations and programs. The cost of housing reentrance control and care of those reentrants and reentry services are becoming more and more complex. They're more and more costly. Just like our education system and our healthcare systems, SCI's are changing. There's a new wave in corrections. They're changing for the better. Schools and hospitals are not getting rid of valuable assets. They're not getting rid of properties. We can't apply old ideas. We can't apply old solutions to new complex problems. Eliminating permanent valuable property or estate asset as a way to temporarily fix a budget year? I don't know if saying the small trend in the past 12 years justifies closing a prison. Not SCI or T, I mean any prison. Now, you don't need to know weatherman to know which way the wind blows. It seems, it appears, decisions might have already been made. While working at SCI Retreat the last time, Secretary Wetzel, I took the job Monday before the announcement. I'm so proud to be working for you and the DOC. And I took that job. And to quote Shakespeare, it says, "It appears I've set my life upon a cast and I will stand the hazard of the die." I'm not worried about SCI or T closing. I'm not worried about my coworkers. They're tough. They're bad. They're smart. They're the best of the best. And wherever they go, their brethren are going to take them in. And they're going to do great work because they are great workers. I'm not worried about the incarcerated citizens nor their families, for they will receive the same fair, firm, and consistent services that we are all taught to do in the DOC. I'm worried about what we are saying as a Commonwealth when we are taking away another property, yet another asset from our citizens, and shutting down yet another facility for a temporary budget situation. Closing the doors is a simple answer to a very complex problem. Amputating the limbs to save the body of society was a flawed practice in the Dark Ages and a flawed practice in recent economic crises in our nation that neither produced long-term results nor mirrored their service. We are far better than such practices and we are far above it. We, the Pennsylvania DOC, are the best of the best in the nation. We can do better than this. This is not an opportunity to reduce our footprint, but to improve our footing, our grip, our traction, and our very soul. I'm asking you to be mindful in your action. Your actions are statements, and we as a Commonwealth are listening. We are all listening. We are listening to what you are telling us when you close another prison. Thank you.
Next, we have Superintendent Mason, followed by Luzern County Manager Dave Pedry, followed by Peter Wanchinson. Sorry about that. And then after that, we're going to just pause briefly as people start queuing in the back. There'll be two lines for public comment, these two aisles out here. So it'll be you three, and then we'll pause briefly as we line people up. When you do give public comment, please speak clearly so the, the, our court reporter makes sure we get the transcript accurate. Superintendent?
Thank you. Good evening, family, friends, staff, and supporters. My name is Bernadette Mason, and I am the proud superintendent of SCI Retreat. Before I begin, I would like to thank Senator Udichak and Senator Baker for supporting this forum and supporting our facility. I would also like to thank Secretary Wetzel and his executive team for their time in listening with open minds to the comments made here tonight. Although we may have differing opinions, I respect everyone's position and am grateful that I am able to speak on behalf of SCI Retreat staff. SCI Retreat has been a vital part of this community for over 30 years and has always served the DOC with pride. We are a unique facility that I believe has always dedicated ourselves to serving the mission of the department. We are entrusted with the care, custody, control, and treatment of approximately 1,100 male inmates, with over half of them having some form of mental illness and/or intellectual disability. We have three residential treatment units that house the more severe cases and a behavioral management unit for those deemed too dangerous for general population and in need of more individualized treatment. We also have a co-occurring therapeutic community, which is focused on combating drug and opiate abuse by those also suffering from mental illness. Behind these initiatives and programs are some of the most dedicated and professional people I have ever had the privilege and opportunity to work with. Public servants who give of themselves to help those incarcerated so that someday they can be returned to their own communities as productive citizens. These individuals not only work here, they live in the surrounding communities, raise their families here, support local businesses, and contribute to the overall economic stability of the area. When we were proposed for closure, it did not come as a surprise. We have been here before. Being the second time around is no less difficult and certainly no less worrisome. For several weeks, my staff have maintained business as usual in the face of many possible challenges and adversity ahead of them. We have not missed a beat. This speaks volumes of the quality and the character of the SCI Retreat family. They are hardworking, caring, and dedicated. Excellent workers that do tremendous jobs in often dangerous situations that not many people would be interested in doing. We know this decision to possibly close our facility will not be made lightly, and we know that fiscal responsibility with taxpayer money is of the utmost importance. We also recognize the importance and success of the Justice Reinvestment Initiative. We support this initiative and hope to continue to contribute to its positive outcomes. SCI Retreat works on a modest budget and will continue to work within our means for as long as we are permitted. We make every attempt to make financially responsible decisions and give back to the community. With that being said, I am here to humbly ask that every effort be made to allow our facility to remain open. When you look at return on investment, I believe SCI Retreat is a responsible investment for the state, the community, and for the inmates we oversee. Knowing that over 95% of inmates will someday return to the streets, an investment in the rehabilitation in a smaller, more individualized system like Retreat seems worthwhile to me. So on behalf of all staff at SCI Retreat, I simply ask that all avenues continue to be explored and all possible extraneous cuts be made before a final decision is rendered. To my SCI Retreat staff, we are family. Brothers and sisters that stick together and help each other out through difficult times, this time is no different. Look out for each other and know that I am with you every step of the way. Most importantly, hold your heads high and be proud. Please know that what you do on a daily basis is recognized and appreciated. What you do does matter and does make a difference. Let me close by saying that we do thank Secretary Wetzel and Governor Wolf for their assurances that no staff will lose their jobs, and we also appreciate the ability to choose as much as possible our transfer facilities. I truly hope it does not come to that, but if it does, rest assured that I and my staff will continue to work for the department as we always have, with dignity, respect, integrity, and the utmost professionalism. Thank you for listening.
All right, maybe he didn't make it.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to testify before the Department of Corrections. I also want to thank our legislators for their work back in 2017, led by Senator Udichak, to keep SCI Retreat open, and for the passing of Act 133 last year. Without Act 133, we would not be having this discussion, and you would be closing SCI Retreat without testimony, debate, and necessary analysis. My name is Peter Wanchusen, and I'm the manager at Newport Township where SCI Retreat is located. I urge Governor Wolf, his staff, and Secretary Wetzel to halt their plans to close SCI Retreat and to objectively evaluate the impact and the ramifications of this decision. The devastating impact it will have on Newport Township is only the start of negative consequences of an ill-advised and short-sighted decision to close that facility. Here are some of the key factors about Newport Township that must be considered. We are the most economically distressed community in the entire Commonwealth. As published in many media outlets, our poverty rate is 23.4%. Luzern County unemployment rate was reported to be 6.3%. More than half of Newport Township's adults are living in poverty. Less than 8% have a college degree. Median household income is less than $41,000 per year. Just over 30% of the township is vacant property. Okay? SCI Retreat is the township's largest employer. If the prison closes and the jobs are shipped to other counties, Newport Township will immediately lose $115,000 in revenue. Our township will be crippled if the SCI Retreat is closed and our dire economic circumstances are prolonged and exacerbated. There will be no way to accurately predict the long-term negative economic dominoes that will fall eventually. The loss of 400 jobs will have unforeseen and lasting consequences well beyond the initial impact relating to our township, school district, and the county as a whole. Newport Township residents are not looking for a handout from Harrisburg. We're looking for a helping hand. Please do not close this facility.
All right, we're going to open it up for public comment now. See the gentleman in the back, and they'll get you lined up. And then you'll come up and speak at one of the two microphones. All right, folks, we're going to start the, the public comment, please. Again, if you could state your name first clearly, and then two to three minutes, please.
Greg Griffin, retired.
A little louder.
Greg Griffin, retired CEO from SCI Retreat. You ought to forgive me. I, I thought I'd had the podium, so I'm going to have to.
I mean, you want, you can go over there.
Oh, sure. Hello, Mr. Secretary and committee members. I'm Greg Griffin, retired CEO from SCI Retreat. We have heard many reasons why it's important to keep SCI Retreat open here tonight. I would like to take you to a different place, and that is to the opioid epidemic that is occurring here in Luzern County. We are third, third, out of 67 counties in drug deaths. We are in the fifth record year here in Luzern County of opioid deaths. But we are fighting back and receiving a lot of federal aid, economic help from the feds, to overcome this deadly epidemic. One big reason for the opioid deaths is depression. The economic depression that would result from the closing of SCI Retreat will be severe. Luzern County needs continued support from the state and the DOC. SCI Retreat has served the Department of Corrections loyally all these years. All of us here ask you to give us more time to recover and more time for the numbers to be examined. We need a break here in Luzern County to recover from this deadly epidemic. We ask all of you to communicate to the governor that he takes some time, time that will help the citizens of Luzern County. Thank you.
Good evening, Secretary Wetzel, ladies and gentlemen.
If you want to get a little closer to the microphone.
Good evening, Secretary Wetzel, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Attorney Sean Logsdon. I had the pleasure of serving as the solicitor for the sanitary sewer authority of the borough of Shikshini. I wanted to speak briefly tonight to build on what Senator Baker was talking about earlier. Our current board of directors consists of five dedicated members who on a monthly basis meet with our plant operators, our engineers, and of course, myself. Currently, the authority accepts waste from the borough of Shikshini, Cunningham Township, a portion of Salem Township, and of course, SCI Retreat. Sewage may seem insignificant when we have people's jobs at stake, but as Senator Baker said, the ripple effect could be devastating. Now, based upon our current meter flows at the, at the plant, SCI Retreat's share of the overall operating income to the authority is approximately 65%. Many of the operational costs that we have at the wastewater treatment plant are fixed, and they would remain present and consistent even if SCI Retreat closes its doors. These costs, of course, would naturally have to be passed on to the residents of Shikshini Borough and our two contributory townships. Now, the authority has a pride in itself on keeping its rates some of the lowest and most reasonable and affordable compared to the other municipal authorities in the area. However, with the closing of SCI Retreat, those rates would most likely rise to levels unheard of in the area. And, sirs, it's not just a, an economic issue. It's, it's also an environmental issue. Now, I spoke with our engineer this morning. The system we have designed, as Senator Baker had stated, it was, is designed for about 450,000 gallons of inflow per day, about 350,000 if you account for like a gallons of inflow per day, about 350,000 if you account for like a dry level flow. However, if SCI Retreat closes and we take away that flow, we're left with, again, 200,000 gallons a day. We don't know if the plant can even operate at that level. Now, our local municipalities are struggling to comply with things like MS-4, getting MPDES permits. Sirs, what permit is Chicxuln Borough, Cunningham Township, Salem Township going to have to get when we can't even treat our sewage? Thank you.
Good evening, Secretary Wetzel, sisters and brothers. My name is Seth Anderson Oberman. I'm an organizer with SEIU Healthcare Pennsylvania. We're a healthcare union that brings together 45,000 nurses and healthcare workers across the state, from hospitals, nursing homes, and state agencies, including our state prisons. And we represent the hard-working RNs at SCI Retreat. We are disappointed, frustrated, and concerned about the closure of SCI Retreat, the proposed closure. This is a decision that will be felt across the entire community and puts those we represent at risk. Healthcare workers face the highest rate of workplace violence out of any industry in the state. In fact, they're involved in 70% of all workplace violence incidents, according to a 2018 Joint Commission report. With the closure of SCI Retreat, inmates will be transferred to other institutions, and already overburdened staff will take on these new inmates, setting the stage for dangerous conditions that put our nurses' safety at risk. These risks are why, in addition to discussing closures of our state facilities, we need to continue pushing for proactive legislative solutions like the Nurse Workplace Violence Act HB 1546, that will make sure nurses are given the support needed to safely carry out their work at their new facilities. We also have concerns about the level of care that can be safely and effectively provided to our patients, in this case inmates. Public service nurses are engaged in social good, taking care of forgotten Pennsylvanians often in hostile environments. They're driven by the belief that every human being deserves medical care. Each time we see a prison or state facility closure, we wonder if it's possible to deliver good care to more people in more crowded environments, especially in our state prisons, which are by their nature challenging, even in the best circumstances. Finally, it's important to raise that the decision to close SCI Retreat is not the result of something that happened overnight. This closure is the result of a tax system that allows corporations and Goliath nonprofit health systems to pay no taxes while the rest of us shoulder that burden. It is no mystery why services and state institutions are closing and struggling, and why budget decisions are made that hurt communities like Luzerne County. SCI Retreat employs 400 people, and the loss of those jobs will be felt not just by the workers, but by small businesses and families. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you today. I'll end by saying that union members of SEIU Healthcare Pennsylvania are advocates, and our state nurses and health professionals will continue to stand up for those they care for, our communities, and good family-sustaining jobs that keep our economy healthy. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Steve Mandrowski, and I'm an activity specialist at SCI Retreat. Very proud to work with everybody there and the administration, so thank you for all that you do. Two things tonight that I heard that I wanted to challenge a little bit. One was, I heard that the commute, the average commute is 28 minutes, and the average commute will go to 27 minutes. We don't even know where we're going. How could you make that calculation? Okay? The other thing was, they talked about new industry coming into the area, and the average salary being $41,000. Does that mean if you don't like where you're going to go, you can go get a new job? Just something that kind of irked me the way they said that. I don't even know why they would bring that up. Anyway, those are just two things tonight that I heard. I want to thank everybody for taking time out from their families this evening, and I also want to mention that we know we're all going to miss more time, or not all of us, but some of us will miss more time in our commutes, where we can be spending it home, and instead, we're going to be driving. All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Dave McWham, a retired captain, and serving my last 11 years at SCI Retreat. Gentlemen from Corrections, thank you. Administrative staff from the governor's office, legislators, thank you for being here and being concerned. SCI Retreat is a vital part of the safety and security of the Commonwealth in Luzerne County. In all the years that I was there and since then, they have always had 100% participation in their mandatory ACA standards, Americans Corrections Association participation. The dedicated staff has always taken the time to make sure it was a safe and proper operating facility. Tonight and earlier in the past couple of months, all I hear is money, money, money. I've heard administrative people from the governor's office talk about economic development that's going to come take place with the $140 million that they found. Well, I'm sorry, in another area, we talk about that there's no $140 million for corrections. So where does the administrative staff for economic development think the $140 million is going to come from if it's not there for corrections? We heard the union president talk about probation and parole. Currently, as of last week, my stammer say there's 1,755 ex-conderers out there, that the probation and parole has no idea where they are. I looked up some of the records of them, it's on your website. It's devastating, the criminals that are out there, that we don't know where they are. All right? Prison population has gone down, yes, but only because we've real-allocated the inmates to halfway houses, two-thirds of which are privately owned. I believe there's over 4,200 inmates currently in the halfway house systems, and two-thirds of them, and I'll be quite honest, aren't properly run, that aren't operated by the Department of Corrections. There's a lot of questions there. All right? And if there's any inmate families here, you should be concerned about what's going on with these correction facilities. Staff assaults are up. We've had a murder of Sergeant Baseman. Just a couple weeks ago, an officer had the tip of his finger bit off by a violent inmate. All right? Inmate suicides are up over the last three to four years. We've never had that problem. We always give good control, but the inmates are afraid of being inside our institution because some of the violent inmates that are running around under some of the programs. SCI Retreat's last manpower survey was just under two years ago. At that time, they were down 10% on the correction officers. That increased the overtime because the positions still have to be filled for the normal operations of the facility. To say that they're not efficient is ridiculous when the staff haven't been replaced, that have transferred up, promoted, or been reassigned or retired. You add vacation days, sick leave, and FMLA games for family members, and that greatly increases the overtime of the institution. It's not the prison's fault. All right? That's just the fact of life. We have overtime budgeted. SCI Retreat's a 24-hour operation, where the staff are there 365 days a week during floods, hurricanes, snowstorms. Everybody's made it there and across the bridge, and stayed there when they were told they couldn't go back across the bridge. It's a dedicated facility. Getting back to the money. It's about the money, it's about the money, and about the money. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania currently, as of July 1st, has a $350 million slush rainy day fund. $350 million that's available. That's just sitting in, I won't say the name of the accounts, but sitting there gaining interest in the super-money market account. All right? The money's there for the projects and for the operation of the facilities. All right? It does, it just has to be allocated. All right? And the money was there. I'm sorry if 1920 doesn't have the $140 million in it, but these gentlemen here think they're going to get it in their budget in 1920. So if they can think the money's there, what makes you guys think that the money's not going to be there if the legislatures, you people, and thank you for your support, allocated for corrections in the next budget? The money is there. We have a slush fund. I know, I got the evil eye because I'm going over. All right. All right, all right. 60 seconds. Time me, 60 seconds. If the budget money is so bad, and I don't think anybody up here got it, why did certain members of the governor's cabinet get $25,000 to $30,000 raises July 1st? We're talking about money. Well, we gave out half a million dollars in salary increases to cabinet members. That's uncalled for when we have, we're told we have economic downturn. And lastly, I'm going to address the elephant in the room. Senator Baker talked about it on the radio a couple weeks back, that the closure of SCI Retreat in Whitehaven is a retaliation for the Luzerne County voting for Donald Trump for president. Just the suggestion... Almost done. Just the suggestion, this requires an independent inquiry. Let's look at the correspondence between the governor and the secretaries involved. What really is the reason for closing SCI Retreat and Whitehaven Center? Thank you.
I'm Don Williams and have a group called Voices of Joe, and we advocate for the safety of corrections officers. Back in the year, I think it was 2008, the federal system of prisons, the Bureau of Prisons, went ahead and started a program called Mission Critical, where they cut this staff down to bare bones for the whole idea of saving money, which they didn't. But in 2013, my son, a corrections officer, was working in a federal prison in Canaan all by himself, trying to handle 125 inmates, when one of them decided to kill him. And the only thing I can say is that to try and fix a budget problem by putting all these officers' lives in danger by sending them to overcrowded facilities and where all kinds of anxiety and difficulties are going to take place is very ill-advised. And I certainly hope that something doesn't result like what happened to my son. Thank you.
Welcome Northeastern Pennsylvania. Thanks for coming out tonight. My name is Harry Haas. I'm one of the 11 members of our county council here in Luzerne County. I know Manager Pedri really came to bat two Januaries ago in 2017. I don't know why he couldn't make it here tonight, but I'm absolutely sure that he is against the closing of this. And especially, last time was definitely very arbitrary, and I appreciate at least the transparency for coming out and hearing some voices. Now, when we look, we've heard a lot of very heartfelt stories tonight, and we know that corrections officers and the staff have probably the most difficult job in Luzerne County. They take burdens home every night that most people don't ever have to consider themselves with and worry about. It's an extremely tough job, but I know you understand that. I think, gentlemen, you and the board have the second most difficult job, and that is to look people in the eye and say, "We're going to close this facility." And I just want to really encourage you to really listen to what's been told tonight. And when we look at the budget, clearly, the bottom line here is money. We could talk about all the wonderful things that our men and women do in our facility in SCI Retreat. We could talk about how it benefits local people who have family members here who can go see them in just a few minutes' drive rather than go to Philadelphia or across the state. There are many, many latent things here that are beneficial to the prison, and coming from a standpoint, purely from a budgetary perspective, I understand you're always looking for ways to cut spending, to save, to consolidate. We have to understand, though, consolidation often backfires. We had a local school district here that closed a school about 15 years ago on the basis that was mentioned earlier, that we have declining enrollment. Well, lo and behold, about eight years later, they had to reopen that same school because the wind shifted. And we see that also with criminality, with folks going into the prison. I want to very much encourage you to really examine this and look at the real ramifications of closing the facility, because I think you're going to see, and it's going to be an unpleasant surprise, that there's going to be a lot of things that are going to happen that aren't going to save a dime. It's probably going to be more costly. So thank you for your time. Please take this back to the governor, wish him our best in this very important decision. We need SCI Retreat to stay open, and we need it here for not just the folks that work there, and I truly appreciate you foreign members that work there at SCI, but it's our whole community that really is going to suffer if this institution closes. Thank you very much.
Hello, everybody. My name's Felicia Rocco. I'm a correctional officer at SCI Retreat and also an acting correction counselor. I want to start with my background a little bit. I was raised in the foster care system since the age of five. When I turned 18, I was kicked out of the system because there's no money. I had no health care, no job, nowhere to go. Most kids in foster care wind up in prison because they are kicked out with nothing to do, nowhere to go, no education, and wind up in the system. I was told I was the kid that beat the system. I work with these inmates every single day. I'm a hostage negotiator, and they come up to me and they tell me their concerns as well. They don't want to leave their, they don't want to leave the facility. A lot of these destability inmates, they can't handle being uprooted and starting over somewhere new with all the medication changes because they're cutting meds and all the programs that they're offered and all the staff. It's not healthy for them, it's not healthy for us to be moved. I live 40 miles from SCI Retreat. Forty plus 65 is 105 miles. How is that plausible? How is that good for me? Yeah, you're giving me a job, and you're also giving me three hours a day drive time. That doesn't work. I also want to go with the money. Everybody's worried about money. I started off working in education. I worked with autistic kids, emotionally disturbed kids, and I did one-on-one, and I did crisis intervention. After three years of restraining kids, of calming them down, rewarding them, and working my ass off to help these kids, I got made $11 an hour and worked two full-time jobs. I also worked in a group home at the same time, full-time, both the group home and the school, to make ends meet. I worked in a group home with one client who was extremely aggressive and needed two people with him at all times because he couldn't be housed at the state hospital that he was kicked out of. I then decided, well, let's give the state a try. I went and moved to the state hospital. Well, lo and behold, they kept saying the state hospital's going to close, the state hospital's going to close. So me needing stability went to corrections. Here I am for the second time, possibly losing my job and not having that stability I was looking for. Also, the day before you announced the closure, I got full custody of my 14-year-old nephew, who is also emotionally disturbed, and his parents can't handle him. Well, what am I supposed to do if I get kicked out of my jail, lose my 62 shift bid, lose my counselor bid, my counselor position, and I have no one to watch him, no one to help raise him? Everyone knows kids that aren't raised properly and aren't monitored, they wind up in jail because they go out and they cause trouble. They're not supervised. That's what you're going to do to our families. You're going to turn our children into our inmates because we can't be there for them, we can't help raise them. Yes, you say, you'll give me another job within 65 miles, but you will take me away from my family, you will take me away from a kid that needs me, and you will take away my stability and my whole life. And where is this kid going to wind up if I can't handle him, his parents can't handle him? Back in the system. The system that throws kids out and does nothing with them. So foster care has no money, education has no money, the state hospitals have no money, mental health has no money, and corrections has no money. Where is it? Because I pay a hell of a lot of taxes to have nothing.
You want to just go right there? You can just go right there.
Thank you. My name's Rick Mattern. I'm an employee at SCI Dallas. I worked nine months at SCI Retreat. I'm an 11-year veteran of Department of Corrections. Every day I go to work, every day I don't know if I'm coming home. When I go to work, I start with my shower in the morning. I proceed to get dressed in my colored underwear, my colored socks, my white undershirt. I then proceed to put on my blue pants. Excuse me, I'm also a food service supervisor. Put on my blue pants, my blue shirt, my shoes. on my blue pants, my blue shirt, my shoes. On my shirt, I put in my ink pen, my pencil, my highlighter, that's one pocket. My other pocket, I put in my color group book, my count cards, and my ID. On my shirt, that I'm very proud, on my left shoulder, I wear the DOC insignia. On my right shoulder, which I'm more proud of, I wear American flag. I go to work, I do my job, I try my best. I heard that closing Retreat, I've heard this many times, is gonna save $140 million to the state. I'm sorry to say that I don't deal in millions or billions of dollars. I'm more of a hundred and a thousand kinda guy. Excuse me, I'm not prepared, I don't have a prepared speech here. I'm here in solidarity for my fellow employees at SCI Retreat. If their families get disrupted or displaced, and they end up at SCI Retreat, I'm, I'm going to say, right now, I'm going to welcome them. They're my brothers, they're my sisters, they're the people I count on. When I first started in corrections, I thought to my, I never thought that they'd be talking about closing prisons. When I started, I was in my 40s. I thought they'd be building more prisons. As the world progresses, it just seems to be getting worse and worse. I see this in my own little neighborhood. I see it on the news, I read it in the newspapers, I see it on, on Facebook, public media. It just doesn't seem right that they're closing prisons with all the crime and all the things and all the horrible things that you see happening every day. In 11 years, which is a short timer, most people will tell me to get time in, I can't believe what's happening. $140 million. They're gonna save $140 million, which is unfathomable to me. With that being said, I also heard that Governor Wolf was going to put the $140 million into education and a few other things that I can't remember what was said, but I never heard once that one dime was going back into the correctional industries. I work at SCI Dallas, I'm not sure when it was built, I'm not sure if it was built for being a prison, but I know we need money. Some of our equipment is down, some of it needs to be fixed, programs need to be upgraded. It just doesn't seem right that you're gonna close a prison to try to save $140 million and put it into education, when the prison system really could use the money. That's only if SCI Retreat closes, which I hope at this time it doesn't. I heard tonight that 11 prisons were at capacity, and I also heard that they were 98% full. 98% full percentages I never really, really dealt with, because 50% could be 50 out of 100 or one out of two. So percentages really don't come into my world unless I really know the exact numbers. The 98% full only means that if every, every cell is up to par and can be occupied by two inmates. For most part, inmates are housed two at a time. If one cell is down, that means two inmates are displaced. So the 98% really doesn't, I don't really understand how many beds that the state system has. I don't really know right now how many prisons the state, state prison has, with the closing of Greaterford, the opening of Phoenix, the closing of Pittsburgh. I know at one time it used to be 28, I don't know if it's still 28, 27, 26. But I know SCI Dallas, I know SCI Dallas seems pretty full at a time right now. If it's not, if it's not at capacity, it must be at near capacity. One other thing that I'd like to say that I heard tonight is that the hiring freeze. I don't under, I don't think people that don't put on their work shoes, their six-inch boots, their uniform, and their duty belt, I don't really think they understand what happens with a, with a hiring freeze. The hiring freeze means people retire, people quit, people do all kind of things, go out on DH, and we're stuck. For every one person that leaves, nobody's hired. The last summer, the summer of 2019, I worked 27 days straight, and probably half of those 27 days straight, I did more than eight hours. When the hiring freeze first started, it was a Band-Aid. I needed a Band-Aid. Right now, I'm very tired. I'm very tired. SCI Dallas just got off a two-day lockdown. I worked 12 hours overtime on top of my 16 hours. I'm tired. The Band-Aid doesn't work anymore. Right now, I need a tourniquet. I'm bleeding out, gentlemen. I'm getting very tired, I'm 60 years old. When it's October 20, when it's October 16th, and you're at work, and you're sweating, there's something wrong. There's something very wrong, especially in an atmosphere like that. We fed 2,100 and 28 inmates with five people. Something wrong, gentlemen, and now you're talking about closing another prison? I think it's time to rethink that, and that's all I have to say for tonight.
Thank you. All right, seeing no more public comment per the legislation, it's 90 days from August 29th, which would actually make it the day after Thanksgiving, so you can anticipate the final decision being made the next week, which would make it the first week in December. Mr. Blackwell, I'll follow up with you. I'd be interested in meeting and talking about other cost savings. And I, I just wanna thank everyone and sincerely appreciate the, the meaningful input. Like, this isn't just an exercise. We're gonna take this back. There's a reason that we have a transcript here, and there's a reason why, why this is being filmed. This is a difficult decision, and we're gonna take all due caution in, in making the decision, and we'll continue to work with your local legislators and local officials and our unions to try to get to as good a place as we can get to. So thank you very much.